Vince, ready? Yep. Sarah? Good evening. I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting of February tenth, two thousand twenty, to order. Would you all stand and do the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the real flag of the British Empire, one nation, united, God. If there is a fault, we will remedy it in just a second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Commissioner Van.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo, Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Conno.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Chair for the record, Commissioners Garcia and Contreras Leo will not be in attendance and you do have quorum.
Thank you. I would like to now review the process of the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide an oral report and answer questions from the Commission. The public hearing will be opened. The applicant will have, will be able to make a presentation limited to fifteen minutes. Members of the public will then be able to be called on to speak. Individuals are limited to three minutes. Designated speakers are limited to ten minutes. The applicant will be given an opportunity to provide comments made by the audience limited to five minutes. The public hearing will be then closed. Discussion will return to the Commission for formal action taken to approve, conditionally approved, denied, or continue to review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address. State whether or not you support or oppose or are neutral to the project. Your statement should be, should be concise. You should be based on knowledge, not gossip or anything of that nature. At this time, we will take public comments for all non-agenda items. Are there any public comments at this point in time? Hearing none, we'll close the public comments and move on to the consent calendar. I'd like to have a motion for the minutes of January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty.
So move.
Second?
All second, I'll move.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that's five, zero. I'd like to make a motion for the absence of Cynthia Contreras Leo and Norma Garcia.
So move.
Thank you. Second?
All second, I'll move.
Second, alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, two absent. Now we'll move on to the regular business calendar. The formal action of the Planning Commission shall become effective after the ten-day appeal period unless the City Council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then, the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and discussion by the City Council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the Planning Commission must be filed with the clerk of the council and a copy sent to the Planning Department within ten days of the date the Commission, of the Commission's action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. Moving on to the public hearings, what I'd like to do at this point in time is I'd like to move item two up to the front and at this point in time, the applicant has asked to have the item continued to March twenty-third. So can I have a motion to continue item number two to March twenty-third?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number three, which is conditional use permit number two zero one nine dash four two for the project located at thirteen oh two South Lyons Street, this too has been asked to be continued until March twenty-third. Do we have a motion to continue this item?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, two absent. Okay. Thank you. We'll now move back to item number one on the agenda. The application amendment number two zero one nine dash zero three and conditional use permit number two zero one nine dash two one for the project located at eight one three North Euclid Street. Please note that this matter has been continued from one twenty-seven. Recommendations on this matter will be forwarded to the City Council at a later date. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please do so by filling out a card. Do any of the Commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time? No? Okay. Hearing none. We'll turn it over to you Ivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Good to see you again. As you mentioned, this item was moved from the last Planning Commission hearing on the twenty-seventh. So I'll kind of breeze through the presentation since you've already seen that and just kind of cover the updated slides for you. So as you mentioned, it is a service station convenience store for the property eight thirteen North Euclid Street. And as I showed you the last time, this is a artist's rendering of what the full development's going to look like with the convenience store and fueling canopy, twenty-four hour operation on a point six five acre parcel. As mentioned, the amendment application would take the current R-one to a C-one, making it consistent with the general plan designation. And then that's the property there, City of Garden Grove to the northwest. This is a previous image that I provided for you guys to see what the current conditions were for the property. And then this is the proposed site plan again. I'm going to cover really quickly some of the points and then go into more detail a little later, but the site plan will now provide the proposed ingress and egress to the site. So as you can see on Euclid Street, it's a right in, right out. And then on Hazard, it's a right, left, in, right out as shown on the traffic impact analysis. Part of the conditions that were added also is to provide, I don't know if you saw it, to the south of the store building, a wrought iron fence to try to mitigate any activities in that south, southeast corner. And additionally, there's another condition of approval that would require some trees to be planted five feet on center spacing on the south property line to try to provide additional screening to the residential, the existing residential uses to the south. The floor plan again, traditional seven-eleven convenience store, you probably know what they look like. Elevations, nothing's changed in a couple of weeks that you last saw this. And then again, the project analysis is specifically bringing this property into compliance with general plan and zoning. It's going to create consistency in that. It's also going to provide additional amenities to the residents, to the workers in the area, anyone driving by. Twenty-four hour operation will increase the services to the residents. And you know, it's consistent with the goal one and two of the general plan land use element. So this, this information I covered before. This slide here is going to cover some of the points that were requested upon staff from the last meeting. Essentially, the vehicle circulation was one of the points that needed clarification. The traffic impact analysis indicates that the safe exiting and entering onto the site, as I mentioned in the site plan, right in, right out on Euclid and then right, left in on Hazard and a right out only on Hazard. There is something that was also placed in the staff report that includes improvements, offsite improvements that are already scheduled with the Public Works Agency to provide additional, additional improvements to the intersection, which include a left, left turn signal and tag is here in case I didn't explain that properly. But it's going to be a designated left on both directions going east-west on Hazard. And there's also already plans to provide a bike, a bike pathway along the southern side of Hazard, so just adjacent to the site. So that's going to create an additional buffer, so no parking on that. And then another item that was brought up was the perimeter fencing. Currently existing, there's a six-foot CMU along the east and south. And there's an added condition that the, the CMU wall, the perimeter fencing along those two sides is going to be brought up to seven feet additionally with vines to help deter the graffiti. There's also the condition to provide a wrought iron fence to deter any illicit activities for the southeast corner. And then the landscaping portion, we added the conditions to provide dense landscaping and shrubbery to try to deter any activity in that area. And as I mentioned in the site plan, there's also an additional condition or part of the condition of landscaping to provide Italian cypress trees to try to screen the existing residential to the south. I also mentioned the vines along the perimeter walls. And then as far as lighting and security, it's standard to provide a closed circuit TV. The applicant has also mentioned that he's going to provide CCTV access for outside of the building, not just inside. So that's an added security measure. And then with the lights, the light standards and the wall packs, those will include deflector shields so it's not shining bright onto sensitive land uses to the south and to the, to the east. So with that, staff provides a recommendation to approve, for City Council to approve mitigated negative declaration number twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, amendment application number twenty nineteen dash three, and conditional use permit number twenty nineteen dash twenty-one as conditioned. So I'm available to answer any questions that might come up. And we do have the applicant here. Again, if you have any other questions of the applicant.
Okay, thank you Ivan. Does the Commissioner have any questions of staff at this point in time?
I do.
Go ahead, Ken.
Ivan, could you tell me why the, the project only allowed right out only on Hazard? Why, why don't you allow right out only on Hazard?
That, I think that was part of the security or the, to try to prevent issues, but I think Teague might be able to answer that a little better than I can.
Kate?
Hi, good evening. Take Higgins, Public Works Agency. The question of why we only allow left out, typically we try to reduce the amount of left turns onto arterial streets in particular as we're near an intersection. And in this case, or we would be crossing two lanes of traffic and, and entering another street, and Hazard has two lanes in each direction currently.
I see. Alright, thank you.
That's right.
Kate, what's the distance from the, from the corner to the egress and ingress on both of those sides?
It's, I don't have the exact distance, but it's around a hundred feet on, on both of them.
Isn't it supposed to, isn't it supposed to be more than a hundred feet?
No, I think you're talking about maybe C-five.
I'm talking about the Hazard, if I'm looking at Hazard and I'm looking at the side street, what's the distance from the entry to the corner?
So, I, I don't have that measurement, but I think what you're referring to is a requirement in the C-five zoning district that requires any entrances to a property to be at least a hundred and fifty feet. This would be a C-one, so it wouldn't require that, that distance.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you Ivan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
Yes, all correspondence received by the deadline has been distributed.
Okay, thank you. Now's the time to open up the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak at this point in time on the matter?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission and staff. My name is Adon Madrid. I am with ASI Development. Our offices are located at five nine three two Bolsa Avenue, Suite one oh seven in the city of Huntington Beach. Thank you again for, for the opportunity to address you this evening. We appreciate all the work that staff has put into addressing the questions that were raised at the last Planning Commission hearing and believe that they've done a good job in, in addressing those issues and concerns. We are in full agreement with the additional conditions that have been added to all of the resolutions. So we would appreciate the Planning Commission would make a motion this evening to approve our project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have one speaker card, Omar Dominguez.
My name is Omar. I live at I-oh-three North Euclid. That's the HOA directly in front of the proposed development on the Hazard side. I spoke during the last meeting and supported development and I still continue to support it. I just wanted to give you guys some updated information. For the traffic concerns that were brought up the last time, the city has already sent out letters documenting that they're going to be adding the bike lanes going all the way from Harbor all the way into the city of Westminster. This should reduce a lot of the issues because they'll be adding the left turn lanes going east and west. The area is known for its accidents because of the lack of those turn lanes. Bringing those in should mitigate that issue. There's the other concern that kids are going to be using the crosswalk to go to the seven-eleven. During heavy traffic hours, the streetlights create dense traffic which slows vehicles down, which should mitigate the issue of kids crossing the street. The second issue, let's see, traffic being diverted back onto Hazard. It was brought up that it was going to create more traffic into our communities. It really isn't, it's already a busy street as it is. If anyone's concerned about traffic, it should be the development that's already there next to the seven-eleven, which is Temple, I believe. They already take up all of our parking in the area. They create a lot of traffic nightmares. The police department has documented that as well. And then this development's going to be bringing in a convenience store, which is exactly that, convenient for us who live in the neighborhood. They have things from, you know, snacks and treats, which is regular for all seven-elevens, but they also have things for people who live in the area for toilet paper, you know, medication, women hygiene, that's available twenty-four hours if you guys approve that permit. And then my only request for you guys is if you guys do take care of it, is if they can add a keep clear sign or lane at the entrance of our community once this development is brought into the area. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Omar. Does anybody else at this point in time like to speak on item number one? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Anyone? Go ahead, sorry.
I just really want to thank staff and the applicant for addressing the concerns of the Commission from last meeting. In particular, I really appreciate the vines and the additional vegetation to really help alleviate some concerns regarding graffiti, transientsy, and loitering. I agree that this kind of seven-eleven, particularly because it does not sell alcohol or any alcoholic beverages, would really be a convenience to the local community, especially if, like if you're doing a late night run for snacks or any necessities, you never know, and it's a pretty residential area, so you know, you don't want to have to drive fifteen, twenty minutes to get somewhere. So I, I really do like that. Thank you.
Do you have any comments at this point in time? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Or recommend approval.
Second.
Alright, so you're recommending, you're recommending the motion as it stands?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright.
As a condition.
Ken? Your second?
Yeah, I'm the second, as a condition.
Any other conversation at this point? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, two absent. Thank you. We will move on to, at this time, I'd like to place, it's a time and place to consider item number four, conditional use permit number two zero one nine dash four six for the project located at three eight two zero South Fairview Street. Decision on this matter is final unless appealed within ten days of, by an interested party, individual, or group. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please do so by filling out a card. Do any of the Commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time? Hearing none? I'm going to turn it over to you Jerry.
Good evening Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is a conditional use permit application followed by add of firmament with PN Design Group on behalf of the property owner to allow the rehab of an existing service station located at thirty-eight twenty South Fairview Street. The project consists of the demolition of an existing automated car wash kiosk and service station and the construction of a new automated car wash service station canopy and a convenience store. Currently, the image below is depicts current conditions, which the site was improved back in nineteen seventy-two and some minor alterations have been done since then. But as you can see as by the image being depicted here, the car wash is located along the north property line, which measures about eight hundred and fifty-five square feet. The canopy is located in the center of the site, which contains five fueling pumps and a small little kiosk about almost a hundred and fifty square feet. So as mentioned, the applicant is proposing to scrape the entire site and pretty much rehab the entire service station. This is an aerial site, showing the location of the subject site, which is highlighted in blue. And then you have the city of Costa Mesa to the south of the property. To the north and west, we do have Chapel, Chapel, and then we do have some surrounding single-family homes to the north of the side as well as to the east and, and south. And then we do have a office complex. Right across from the service station in the city of Costa Mesa, there's another service station, mobile gas station. It also has a convenience store as well as a small automated car wash. This is the proposed site plant and landscape plant. The car wash and the C-store are, again, as mentioned, being proposed where the current location of the car wash is currently located at, along the north property line. And the new car wash that's being proposed is slightly larger than the current one at about a thousand square feet in size. And it does have a stacking lanes towards the rear of the property, which is the west property line, that will accommodate up to ten vehicles. And right up next to the car wash, we have the proposed convenience store that's being proposed at about sixteen hundred square feet, which will offer your typical goods that you could find at other convenience stores located at service stations. As like the previous application, this one would also not have any alcohol sales. And then the proposed canopy has been realigned to kind of improve overall circulation for the site and would accommodate up to six fueling stations. The site will be accessed off of two driveway approaches off of Fairview, Fairview Street, and these are current driveway approaches, which will be limited to right in and right out only. And then there's another driveway approach, also Sunflower Avenue, that are also limited to right in, right out only. The applicant is eliminating one existing driveway approach out of Sunflower. So overall, the circulation and traffic is being improved. This is a floor plant of the convenience store and car wash, very typical, again, very standard for a convenience store with one unique sex restroom, restroom and an office area for the tenant. These are the elevations of the convenience store and the car wash. It's a contemporary, modern architecture with stoned, smooth stucco, porcelain tile, steel canopies, and some trellises along the southwell elevation that will help with screening and providing some vines along that elevation. And then this is just the elevations of the northwest and southwell elevations of the convenience store and car wash. And then these are the elevations for the service station canopy, which pretty much kind of carries the same colors as well as the stonework that is being provided for the convenience store. With that, the conditional use permit is consistent with SAM and SPICO standards. It's also consistent with the general plan. The proposed project will revitalize an existing service station. As previously mentioned, the circulation and the traffic overall with this proposed site plant are being improved and the vehicle stacking lane for the car wash, you're looking at to be able to accommodate up to ten vehicles. The vacuum stations are set back from the adjacent property and are being shielded to mitigate any noise. Vines will also be included along the west and north perimeter walls to mitigate any graffiti and anti-graffiti coating has also been conditioned to be applicable. With that, the project would not be determined to the health, safety, or welfare of the surrounding community and would not ever see affect the general plan. Sorry. That concludes staff presentation. I'm free to answer any of your questions. And the property owner is also here.
Any questions of Jerry or the staff?
I do.
Ken?
Jay, I noticed the service station was built in nineteen seventy-two, which is forty-eight years ago. I assume we probably have maybe at least minimum two or three fuel tanks, underground fuel tank. So Cindy, I also noted the application requests to remove five fuel pumps and replace it with the six fuel, fuel pump and enlarge their service station and so on. Is there any plan to replace or bring the underground fuel tank up to date, up to code?
That, that is correct. All the tanks will be up to, brought up into performance to meet today's standards, but they're still keeping two fuel tanks.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else with a question? No? Thanks Jerry, appreciate it. Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any written correspondence on this item?
All correspondence received by the deadline have been distributed to the Commission.
Okay. At this point in time, we will open up the public hearing. I have, would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Hi, members of, Mr. Chairman and the Council.
Might want to move a little closer to the.
Is this better?
That's better.
Okay. I think Jerry pretty much covered a lot of it, but this has been in our family for a long time and it's been pretty dated and we would just really appreciate the opportunity to upgrade the site and, you know, improve the community.
Okay.
So thank you so much.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant at this time? No? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have Alexander Lu.
He was the applicant for items two and three, so that might be a mistake. I think he may have left. I think he may have left. Yeah, he's gone, sir.
He's gone?
Yes.
I had it down as, okay, sorry. Alright. Any other applicant, any other public speaking at this point in time? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Does the commission have any comments on this item?
Yeah. So first, I'd like to say thanks for addressing my, preempting my graffiti question by adding the vines. I really appreciate that. Secondly, I just wanted to address one of the correspondences that we received from, I believe it was Santa Ana Needs ECOD. They mentioned that this was a condition, approval of another car wash, that I just wanted to clarify that this is replacing an existing car wash, and in fact, it is better for the community because we are upgrading, renovating, and improving what is already there. And I really appreciate that you're addressing a lot of the aesthetic and environmental concerns as well as, you know, hedging against any other potential safety issues in that area.
Can I get a motion on this item at this point in time?
Yes, I would like to make a comment on it. The, the project currently valued at the $1.9 million, and after the improvement, the project would generate about three, value about $3.6 million for that would be added to revenue to the city as well as the annual payments fee. For that, and also create addition, at least eight permanent jobs, including for the local resident. For that, I would like to recommend for approval, CUP number 2019, CO2019-46, as a condition.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Felix. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero, two absent. This is time and place to consider item number five, zoning ordinance amendment number This matter was continued from 1/27. Recommendation on this matter will be moved forward to, will move forward to the city council at a later date. You wish to address the planning commission on this item, please do so by filling out a card. I don't believe at this point in time we need to cover disclosure, so we have a card. Okay. Ricardo, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the planning commission. Up for discussion before you, zoning ordinance amendment number 2019-05. The city of Santa Ana proposes adoption of an ordinance to amend several sections of Chapter 41 of Santa Ana's municipal code relating to accessory dwelling units. And to provide a little bit of background, some of you may have heard this either at the study session or HRC, but the city of Santa Ana has had a second dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit ordinance in place since 2003. That was a result of AB 1866, which changes to state law back in 2003 that required local agencies to adopt ordinances to encourage the creation of granny flats. In 2017, there was a series of state law changes relating to ADUs that made our local ordinance void. Following a years-long community engagement process, the city of Santa Ana adopted a local ordinance in 2018, which the city has been enforcing until January 1st of this year. Late last year, the governor signed a series of housing bills that related to a broad spectrum of housing issues, with six of the bills that were signed specifically related to ADUs. So starting January 1st of this year, the changes to state law essentially made our local ordinance null and void again. So since January 1st of this year, staff has been enforcing state ADU standards. And what is an ADU? Again, some of this was covered, but just for those that weren't present at the study session, an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit with complete independent living facilities for one person or a family. The generally can take on three different forms. It can be detached from the primary residential building at the site, attached, or it can be repurposed space, meaning conversion of an existing space or building at the site. The one that's new is junior accessory dwelling units, and it's similar to an accessory dwelling unit, but has some limitations on size. They can't exceed 500 square feet, and they allow for a little bit more flexibility for the property owner because it doesn't require some of the sanitation facilities that are required for an ADU. And if they do have shared facilities, they can have an interior access so they can share the sanitation facilities with the primary dwelling unit at the site. So the bills that I've been speaking of, Assembly Bill 68, 587, 670, 671, 881, and Senate Bill 13, collectively all change accessory dwelling unit state law. I'm going to cover five major topics that were affected, and then follow that up with our proposed ordinance that goes into how the new proposed ordinance is going to comply with those changes of state law. So location, according to changes to state law, we now have to allow ADUs on properties that are developed with single-family, multifamily, and mixed-use, or I'm sorry, in the zoning districts that are single-family, multifamily, or mixed-use. We can no longer require a minimum lot size, and we have to allow a side and rear yard setback of no more than four feet. And the, one of the other big changes is that non-habitable space within multifamily buildings can be converted to accessory dwelling units. So that leads me into a number of ADUs. So on properties that are developed with single-family residences, they are allowed to have one ADU and one JADU, ultimately resulting potentially in a property that would have a single-family residential building, an ADU, and a JADU. For multifamily buildings, they would be allowed to convert the non-habitable space within the building at a rate up to 25% the number of units at the site. So for instance, if a site was developed with 100 units, they'd be allowed to convert the non-habitable space to 25 ADUs. And in addition to the conversion of existing habitable space within the building, those properties that are developed with multifamily dwellings would also be allowed to construct two new detached ADUs or to convert existing non-habitable space that's detached from the dwelling to two ADUs. For size, our prior ordinance limited ADUs to 750 square feet. State law trumped that, so we are going to be looking at requiring at least a 1,200-square-foot ADU is what state law says, but local agencies can have maximums that are below that, as long as the maximums that are established by, by local agencies are not lower than 850 square feet for one-bedroom and studios, and 1,000 square feet for ADUs that have two bedrooms or more. And the 50% threshold for attached units continue to apply, meaning if an ADU is attached to, say, a house that's 1,000 square feet, the ADU would not be allowed to be more than 50%, 500 square feet. And lot coverage, floor area ratios, open space, some of the other development standards that were in place in the past would also be allowed to be implemented as long as those development standards were not used or prohibited the construction of at least an 800-square-foot Parking, in the past, we were allowed to require that any parking that is lost through a conversion of a garage or covered off-street parking structure be provided at the site. Moving forward, state law is also prohibiting that replacement, the local agencies require replacement spaces. And other changes that we can no longer approve are, or other changes that we can no longer require are correction of non-conformities that are found on a property. In the past, if there was something that did not conform to today's zoning district development standards, we would require that those things be brought into conformance with today's code before approval of an ADU. Moving forward, those non-conformities would be allowed to stay in place and not impact the construction of an ADU. Another item that was a big topic of discussion the last go-round was requiring owner occupancy of ADUs. For the time being, state law does not allow local agencies to require owner occupancy of ADUs, but it does allow local agencies to require owner occupancy of JADUs. And lastly, some of the changes more on the administrative level would be review times for ADUs. They're being reduced from 120 days to review and permit an ADU down to 60, and also the impact fees that are being charged for ADUs, so anything below 750 square feet would be exempt from impact fees. So the proposed ordinance that you have before you, we kept as much of the prior existing ordinance as possible because that was drafted through a community engagement process that went over a year, so we wanted to keep as much of those standards as possible, and we only made changes to the sections that conflicted with state law. So for location, they're going to be located in residential zones that allow single-family, multifamily, mixed-use. We do not include a minimum lot size, and the number of ADUs, JADUs, that would be allowed would be consistent with the information I just shared about the number of ADUs, JADUs allowed per site. And for size, instead of having two different maximum size requirements depending on the bedroom count, we elected to go with a one-size, 1,000-square-foot maximum that would be applied to all units regardless of the number of bedrooms or size. And the size limit, as indicated there, we'd be enforcing it, however, if they don't meet any of the other development standards that we have outlined, the property owner would be allowed to construct at least an ADU, sorry, at least an 800-square-foot ADU. So if they exceeded lot coverage, they'd be able to do that. If they did not meet the open space requirement, they'd be able to provide less of the open space than what we are requiring to hit that 800-square-foot ADU threshold. And one item that we'd like to bring to your attention to amend is the section that relates to parking. State law does not allow us to require parking for ADUs that are designed as a studio unit. So just to make that clear in our ordinance, we have decided to move forward with requesting that item number six on the slide be added to the draft ordinance that you have before you to make it clear that studio units would not be required to provide any off-street parking spaces. This item was scheduled to be on the January 27th Planning Commission agenda. Leading up to that meeting, we did receive some correspondence from two different groups. The first group, Californians from homeownership, identified some issues or concerns that they had with the draft ordinance at that time. Those related to definitions, enumerated zones, ADU height, discretionary review for ADUs at historic resources, and our review process. HCD, or Housing and Community Development, also provided us with some comments, and they were pretty consistent with Californians from homeownership related to definitions, enumerated zones, historic resource for discretionary review. Following that correspondence, we made changes to the draft that you have before you and submitted the draft to both of these groups, and have not heard any comment from either, just that if they had any other comments, they'd reach out, but to this point, no further correspondence from those two groups. So based on the analysis provided in the report and the ordinance that you have before you, staff believes that the ordinance that we've provided is going to be informed by local conditions, and it's going to maintain neighborhood character, and it's going to provide additional housing options for residents. And also, since we did submit this already to HCD, we believe that it complies with state law. Based on the report and the information I shared with you today, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance approving zoning ordinance amendment 2019-5. That concludes my presentation.
Does any of the commissioners have a question, Ricardo?
I do.
Ken?
I have two questions. As of 2020, the state senate, AB 68, allowed the ADU unit to be built concurrently with a single-family dwelling. If our city will adopt the same, the regulation under AB 68?
For an ADU, yes.
Yes, for an ADU. And I have the second, my question, second question is regarding the setback. On the staff report indicated the minimum of four-foot side and rear yard setback. Does it mean we're going to allow only four foot on the rear setback as well?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just a question regarding the parking for a studio unit. Can you point me to where it permits that because it's not enumerated under the parking exemption in 65852.2?
In the government code?
Yeah.
Okay, I can pull that up. I'm sorry, I don't have the government code section in front of me. I thought I did. But it's in reference to how much parking a local ordinance could apply to an ADU, and it references one parking space per unit, not to exceed one parking space per bedroom, whichever is less. So in cases where there's not a bedroom being proposed, it would be zero, so we would not be able to require a parking space for a studio unit.
Okay.
I can get you the exact code section.
Great, thanks.
No problem.
Anybody else? Angie?
So if this goes through, well, when it goes to city council, and if senate doesn't adopt this proposed ordinance, do we automatically have to accept a state one?
That's right. So if we, it's not a requirement that a local agency adopt a local ordinance, but if we do not, we have to keep implementing the state standards.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question. So we talk about the ADUs versus the, the junior ADU, sorry. How are we going to control that? I mean, if it's an ADU that somebody wants to build, they're going to go to the planning department, they're going to get a permit to build something in the form of an ADU. But a junior ADU already exists, for the most part, it's a room. So I think, is, is the individual homeowner going to have to get a permit for that?
They would, so they would be subject to the same review and application process that an ADU would, so they would submit their proposed plan to the planning counter and then subsequently to the building division for review.
So how is that, I'm curious how that's, how that's going to work, because, I mean, taking another direction, we know that there are homeowners in Santa Ana that have two and three families living in a house. So is each room going to be considered a junior ADU, or is it not?
No, they'd have to submit an application to carve out a portion of the house, and there's a definition for what constitutes a junior accessory dwelling unit. So the space that's being carved out would have to then be modified to comply with those standards.
So I guess I'm asking, what's going to motivate the homeowner to do that, number one? And the second thing is, who's going to, who, I mean, it would be a code enforcement situation as far as I could see, but how does that work?
As far as motivation, I think it's more if someone has the need for an accessory unit or housing unit at the site that they can either rent out to a family member or have an older adult child reside there, it's just adding another unit to the site. And the question about code enforcement, I'm not sure I'm following that question.
Well, I mean, if, right now, today, if an ADU exists on a piece, on a property today, and it hasn't been permitted, it was just built, then code enforcement has the ability to go in there and cite that particular facility, correct?
That's right.
I mean, one of the things you showed the last time in the meeting was, and I think we've had this discussion every, for the last couple of years with ADUs, is the fact that from 2003 to 2014, there were 27 permits that were, that were applied for within the city of Santa Ana for an ADU or a granny flat at that point in time. Once the ADU ordinance became fact in San, in Santa Ana, that level of, of application went up significantly. And you presented that.
Right.
So this is another ratchet up of what we're trying to do from an ADU perspective. It just seems like, how do you do something unless, unless there's a way in which you can manage it and control it? I mean, it's, it's difficult to understand how it's going to be handled from a planning department perspective and a code enforcement perspective.
I think I understand your concerns and questions, and I think the fact of the matter is, is that for those existing situation to where we have multiple families living under one roof, that is still a condition that's not encouraged nor is a condition that would be further exacerbated. What we're looking at is the ability to assist some of the homeowners, or at least through the state's perspective, increasing housing availability and potentially reducing the cost of housing through availability. So for those... So for those properties that can and is eligible for either creation of additional ADU or the junior ADU, this would be an opportunity to bring those conditions into compliance and be able to rent out without the fear of, you know, it being not permitted. The junior ADUs, if I'm correct, it's only one junior ADU that can be created and not necessarily more than one junior ADU from the structure. So on a single-family property today, you can have an ADU which can be attached or detached and plus one junior ADU. So for a single-family, that would be creating an opportunity for three separate rental situation for a property, whereas under today's regulation, it would be just an ADU and the unit itself.
I mean, what I'm, what I'm also trying to get to is that, you know, this, these ordinances have been put in place by the state.
Correct.
And the purpose of doing that is to say, you're built, you're not doing enough building of homes and properties and apartments, and you're just not doing enough. But here's a project, here's a phase or a segment which is called ADU. We'll use that to count against your ability to improve on the number of housings, the number of housing buildings that we have in the state, in the city. So we're counting those. We're using that as a count to say that we have X number of ADUs in the city, and that brings us to, we're adding homes, we're not, we're counting it, we're identifying it, we're holding, holding, we're being held accountable for that.
I don't believe that ADU or junior ADUs will count towards our regional housing needs assessment if that's what, you know, the housing that's being allocated to the city is what's required to be new, to be produced at the next housing cycle. The ADUs not going to be counted as part of that.
So it's not?
Just to clarify a little bit, ADUs are counted toward the RENA units. And then depending on, they are.
I thought they were counted against the RENA.
They are. And then depending on the method that, or methodology that we use, we can potentially classify them under different affordability categories under the RENA.
So you're talking about the tracking of it? The tracking of the ADU towards the RENA number?
Well, I'm just saying that it's a numbers game. It's a numbers game. And the fact is, is that, you know, the state is saying, here's what you can do to improve on housing. You can build ADUs, and that's going to get more housing into your city. And so my question is, how are we going to be able to say at the end of the day, we've added 150, 250, 500 ADUs, and that's how we've gotten closer to our numbers? I got to believe that the RENA numbers do take into consideration some of the ADUs. And I see heads shaking, yes, that's true. So how are we going to control it and count it so that we can take advantage of what we're being asked to do?
So we're currently counting the number of ADUs that are being constructed in addition to the, counting them toward RENA. They also count toward the annual progress report toward meeting our housing element goals and policies. So they are counted toward that as well on an annual basis that we, that we report to the state.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ken.
The fact of the matter is, our cities have made, facing a major shortage of housing. And the answer, another fact, is there's numerous property in our city already have been existing or been built as these quote-unquote illegal ADU or junior ADU. Is this possible if this were new law, when I would allow, okay, you have built addition, you know, space in your house or illegal conversion or whatever, now bring up to code for public safety but also the resident's safety, bring up to code, and we can approve you under ADU or JADU. Is that possible?
Yes, if the unpermitted building can comply with the current standards, which are going to be a lot more lax than they were in the past, a lot of those units that got constructed would be eligible to submit applications to legalize them.
But the, whatever, the addition to structure or even built, how are they able to, able to get that in compliances?
So depending on how it was constructed, they'd have to demonstrate in plans that they submit to the city that the building meets the development standards as well as the building code, and they would be issued permits and then inspections would happen like if it were a new ADU construction.
I like that idea because by doing that, then all the, an illegal structure in our city can able to bring up to code for public safety, you know, for the benefit of the resident. And I think would allow that, like a lenience opportunity for the, an illegal structure can bring up to code. Thank you.
Question I've got, so you had two organizations that said that they had some concerns about some of the current points that was in that, in the original ordinance. And you said you hadn't received anything back. Did they know they had a deadline of today to get that information back?
They were aware, and I spoke to a representative from HCD over the phone a couple of days ago, and they said that they had reviewed the updated draft that you have before you. They don't have any concerns or issues with it.
So they're okay? And you said the HRC?
The Calif, it was HCD, sorry.
HCD, sorry, okay, my bad. So both organizations are good with what was done in the revision?
Yes, the gentleman, I believe his name was Mr. Matt with Californians for Homeownership, he's in receipt of this draft ordinance. He replied saying that he had received the modified draft ordinance and didn't have any further comments at that point.
Okay, thank you on that, Ricardo. Any other questions and comments of staff?
Yeah, just a quick question. Planning Commissioner Nguyen mentioned us helping homeowners kind of come up to code or, you know, apply even if they previously had an ADU that didn't meet the code requirements. What is the process for that, just for my own edification?
They would be submitting an application along with some submittal requirements that include plans and some other items to the planning counter first for review. Once the planning division confirms that the proposed project, in this case the ADU, complies with all development standards, planning would approve. They would then take their approved plan set and submit to the building division for review of building code compliance.
And aside from, aside from noticing, you know, the planning commission meeting and whatnot, are we doing anything to help Santa Ana residents understand these new requirements? Because I, you know, there's a lot of parking issues in the city, and, you know, there's not a lot of parking requirements here, and we cannot enforce a lot of parking requirements as well as, I'm sure there are a lot of illegal structures that are going up that I'm sure code enforcement is working to address, but it's difficult in a very large city like ours. So what are we doing to really help inform our residents about these new changes that may, they may be seeing in their neighborhoods?
We were planning on working with our neighborhood initiatives team to go out to the organized neighborhood associations to their regularly scheduled meetings to share the updated language with them.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Ricardo. I'll assume there's no written communication on this item, or?
Yes, there was, and it was posted on our website.
Okay, sorry, okay, good. All right, at this point in time, we will open the public hearing. I have one card here, Dimitri Luhan.
Hi, my name's Dimitri Luhan, and I had some questions in regards to that. I'm glad to see that you are conforming to the new California standards. The, there's a couple of questions that come up when you view these, the AUDs, they should be viewed, according to California, as not new construction because it creates a lot of excessive fees looking at as new. So it should be viewed as that, like, they look at impact fees. I was glad to see there's no impact because two months ago there was, and it was a lot of money. I mean, prior to December, it was probably $26,000 to $30,000 in fees just to build this little bungalow. So that's been alleviated a lot of that because there's no impact fees now. I'm not sure what that's going to look like, but the, so you have, we're in California State, you shouldn't be looking at this as a new, as a new build, but an old build. And then there's also the permit application, but I'm glad to hear that that's been taken care of. The, I was just concerned about that. The square footage is a little crazy. It's like, I think, once it gets squared up, that'll be something to look at because that was an issue where we were maxed out at 750. But, so there's still ways that they look at, which is the, when you're applying for the permit, it's how you, how you're able to put your plumbing in because there's, they look at that as new build, so there's almost $10,000 in fees just to, which I don't, I think it's a little excessive. That's one thing to look at. It's not a new build, so that, there's, there should be some changes there. Then also, that's basically, he mentioned something on the height. I think you can go 18, 18 feet on, which is pretty high, I was surprised, but anyway. I'm just looking forward to see how this comes up, you know, at the end, how you, because you have some concerns on a lot of things, and you all did have questions. I seen this somewhat as a, because it's not just for private individuals, there's a lot of developers that have homes, and they're renting them out, and now they can add AUDs to them, and it's just additional income in their pocket. They, like you just seen, there's three additional units they can now put on the properties and rent them out. So that's going to be a lot of money for them. Maybe you can do something like if they rent it, there's a fee to that versus some, like a private party just wants their grandparents to live in the back and there's no rent, that type of issues. But there's, in the consulate, when they get it, there'll be some more issues that come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri. By the way, you can probably raise any of your questions, you got half the planning department here, so if you got questions for them, they're all here.
Well, I think they-
At the end of the meeting, it would be helpful, you might want to go do that.
Yeah, I think they're-
They're here, but you can sit down now. Appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, are there any other, any other public hearing items at this point in time to be discussed? Nope, hearing none, we'll move to bring this matter back to the commission. Anybody have any comments on this item? I think the one thing that was kind of brought up by Dimitri, which is another good thing, is, is that, you know, if we are going after these units and we're counting them and everything else, at some point in time, it does create revenue for the city. So again, behooves us to have somewhat of a handle on what we're doing with regards to this process. So, do I have a motion on this item at this point in time?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to place a motion to recommend that the City Council adopt an ordinance approving ZOA number 2019-S05, as conditioned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other conversation or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero, two absent? All right, at this point in time, we will move on to the work-study calendar, and we have several items on the calendar. What we'd like to do at this point in time is start the work-study with the Bowery mixed-use development.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a five-minute recess? We just got the updated PowerPoint from the applicant, we need a few minutes to download it and a video as well, so.
Take a five-minute recess?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We haven't shut down though.
No, it's downloading. Just when it opens, hit Ctrl-L for full screen. L for full screen.
You're doing the first five minutes, we can switch it over.
That's what we're going to do. Oh, yeah, well, you know what, we'll pre-upload it for you, it's fine. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You okay here, Jerry?
What about this? It's all you know.
So it should be on, yeah?
Okay. Does it work? But did I turn it up right now, or was that? Okay.
Jerry, I'll stand over here.
What were you all sitting? Was that? Yeah, it's been a little while. Can I see you all sitting? Except for, how did we lose the other three?
Look at them. Look at Star.
Yeah, right. Thanks there. Three amigos back? All right. Who's presenting here? You are. All right, do it, Jerry.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This is a work-study session on the Bowery, which is a mixed-use development being proposed at 2300, 2310, and 2320 South Red Hill Avenue. This slide shows an area of the subject property to your left. The subject site is being highlighted in red, and it's approximately 14 acres right now, and is developed with three industrial buildings, which will be demolished as part of the application. The current general plan line use destination of the property is professional administrative office, and the zoning district is M1. As mentioned, it is surrounded by other industrial uses to the northwest and south, and to the east of the property is the city of Tustin. As proposed, the project does require certification and environmental impact report, a general plan amendment to change the line use destination, a zone change to change the zoning district, a site plan review, and a subdivision map, subdivision to allow for the creation of four additional parcels. The applicant is proposing to construct a mixed-use development with a maximum of 1,100 residential units and 80,000 square feet of commercial space, of which 60,000 square feet is on the ground level with some additional mezzanines being proposed. The project also consists of open space as well as some amenities located on the ground floor, as well as some rooftop, um, open space area. The total parking that is being proposed right now is 2,447 parking stalls, of which 400 spaces will be allocated for the commercial uses. And the residential development is being parked at 1.86 parking spaces per unit. In addition to that, there will be shared parking amongst the residential as well as the commercial uses, and some additional guest parking spaces. In addition, the applicant is proposing a parking management plant, which will ultimately bring up the residential parking up to two point spaces per unit. The following slides are just some renderings of the proposed development. The applicant will have additional slides that will be presented later on, so I'm just gonna briefly highlight through some of these. So this is the rendering off of Red Hill Avenue and Warner at the intersection, and as you can see, the proposed development is being proposed at about six stories in height, about seven levels of parking, and then you do have some of the commercial that you could see towards the front. This is a rendering of the central paseo. And then this is a rendering, rendering off of Red Hill Avenue, which is kind of highlighting a surface parking lot that's being proposed with some retail and residential units above. And this is a rendering of the interior street. This is the proposed site plant. The site plant is divided into four different areas categorized by building A, B, C, and D, and then you have the commercial component that faces Red Hill Avenue with some that faces off of Warner Avenue. This is just a zoom image of the proposed development with regards to the commercial aspect. They do have some outdoor dining area that is being proposed, and outdoor plaza area for the residents as well as tenants and guests to use. Just to highlight some of the requirements in terms of discretionary actions, the project as proposed does require certification of environment impact report, a general plan amendment to change the land use destination of professional administrative office to, to urban neighborhood or district center, but I believe we're moving forward with district center to allow for the mixed-use development. A AA application or a zone change to change the zoning from M1 to specific development, which is pretty much standard as some other projects you've seen prior to this, does require a site plan review, and again, as Pierce has mentioned, a subdivision to allow for the creation of four parcels. This concludes staff presentation. The applicant does have their own presentation that they will be presenting to you shortly after this, and then after that, we'll take questions and answers from the planning commission.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, Planning Commissioners. My name is Will Winkenhofer, and I'm with the applicant development team, and we're here to present the Bowery, and I'll start with introducing, RC Alley is our design architect, and he'll provide some details about the project, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. I hadn't seen it on such a big screen before, so it was interesting to watch it. Again, thank you, I'm, I'm gonna just, I'll be brief, I'm gonna walk through the project, give you some additional details, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as well. I just walked through the project in a little more detail than staff did. It does consist of four buildings. Building A is, is on the corner of Red Hill and Warner. It is a mixed-use building, it's a wrap configuration building, 275 units, approximately 36,000 square feet of retail, which is the retail under the building, as well as the freestanding pads out on Red Hill Street. Building B, 244 units, it has about 24,000 square feet of total retail. Building C, 322 units, about 20,000 square feet of ground floor retail, and on the back is building D at 259 units. You can see we have an internal street grid, can I point to stuff here? Yes, I can, I'm gonna actually point to things, I like to point to things. So we have an internal street grid, as you can see, that basically cuts through the site from Red Hill up to Warner. We also have an internal paseo between buildings A and B, and it really takes us to the large retail plaza that fronts Red Hill Avenue. We, again, we have parking in front of building C as well, and these are wrap garages, wrap This really so, shows the circulation, the vehicular circulation through the site, the pedestrian circulation in blue, and the red denotes the parking entrances to the four buildings. In working with staff to develop the project, we were able to work the street, work with them to develop the street grid. We've also anticipated future connections, if something, if and when something occurs on these adjacent sites, we have a future street connection here, and a future street connection here as well. This just shows the environment, I know you all are very familiar with everything going on in the area. We studied it in great detail as we started doing the original planning for the project. We looked at the flight, we looked at the retail, and we, again, really noted, really looked at everything going on in Santa Ana, the winery, the breweries, the Heritage Project, which is under construction right now, and we really tried to design the project to fit into the environment, not only from a plan standpoint, but architecturally as well. And I'll show you architecturally where we were, but our whole goal, where we are, our whole goal is to really develop this project to be a live-work-play community. We think it has incredible opportunity to do that. We, we, you know, obviously with the traffic on Red Hill and all the people driving to this area, we have a significant amount of retail that we've anticipated will be incorporated into the project, you know, and we believe it will be very, very successful. These are shots of the retail. You can see in the lower right is a key map, and you can see the shots that look at the small retail pad building in the upper left, the, kind of the rear of the larger pad building in the upper right, and you can see through the community plaza area on the lower left. Again, more views of the retail, kind of looking back the other direction, again, you can see the key map on the lower right. You can see the, the upper left photo is looking back towards the mixed-use building, which would be building B. You can see full ground floor retail, double high-volume space, it's gonna be, be real viable retail space, and again, we believe there's enough, there's a significant amount of mass to make this very, very successful. Looking really from Red Hill, that's where you see slide seven in the upper left, that's right at the entrance when you drive into the project, and you would look to the right, and you would see the retail building. It's a significant building, we think it could be either a food hall or a market hall, could be multiple restaurants. We've designed it to be very, very flexible, and I would say all the retail space that we've, we have designed is very flexible. It will be fully integrated into the buildings with all the shafts and all the utilities to make it, to make it successful retail space. This is building A on the lower right. You can see the view from the corner of Red Hill and Warner, that would be the view on the upper right. We have coined the, the architectural palette to be industrial tech. We think it works very well with the area, it's very sympathetic to the area, we think it plays off of what's happening on the flight, and really, again, we think it's very appropriate for the location. You can see the upper left is a view of our pool deck, it's, it is up on top of the building, so it's a rooftop pool deck. And then to the lower left is our lower, our lower resident roof deck as well, which looks down into the paseo that bisects between buildings one and building two. This is, these are shots of, I'm sorry, building A and building B. This is building B. Upper left is the roof deck, very different character than building A, and we're trying very specifically to do that. We want each of these buildings to be their own community, to have their own character, to have their own lives. You can see upper right, that's the, that's the entrance into the project from Red Hill again, and that shows you the, again, the mixed-use building we pulled back from some of the earlier shots that I showed you, but you can see the full activated ground floor retail, the units above, the articulation with, with the facades. And then the lower left slide is the paseo between, between buildings A and B. It really is, we think it's gonna be a fantastic connection, pedestrian connection through the project. This is building C, and it, it also is a mixed-use building. Upper left is the pool court, and that is an on-grade pool court. Upper right is, you can see the, the view is as you drive in from Red Hill. Before, the last building I showed you, we're looking right, this one, you're looking left towards the mixed-use building. Again, you can see full ground floor retail, two-story volume, full ground floor retail. And to the, the lower left is our leasing, leasing facility, which is off of the interior Last building is building D along the backside, and it's a, it's a narrower building, it's a buffer to the adjacent industrial users, uses. You can see, the first shot in the upper left is if you're walking from the paseo, walking north, and you can see the courtyard that we've designed to be, really kind of capture the views and capture that paseo. The slide to the upper right is the roof deck, again, very different character than the other two buildings, the other, the other two roof decks. And the lower left is the vehicular entrance into the project, and that would be if you're driving from Red Hill up the main interior drive, and that's the vista, and that's the termination point for the, for the vehicular drive. These are photos of the Heritage Project. This project is complete, it's very similar in quality to what we're gonna be doing, and so I thought it would be good, just so you can really see it, you can see it executed. You can see upper left, the, the gathering areas, the smaller community gathering areas, so you can meet with a group of friends, family, but a, a whole series of many smaller gathering places. These are some of the interior and exterior courtyards as well, interior functions, leasing function, the courtyard areas, and you can see the tables for, for gatherings and for dinner if you're having, for- if you're having friends, the community areas. Upper-left is our driving course, our interior driving range course. You can see the game rooms with the pool tables and the, the ping-pong tables, and the gym, and again, the courtyards. And this is really, the whole intent is really to show you character. This is what we said we were gonna do last time. We've done it, and we just wanted to show you. These are some of the dwelling units also on that project. Really high-quality, very high-quality stainless steel appliances, Corian countertops, you know, great backsplashes. You can see the bathroom on the left, tile backsplash, deep soaking tub, really high level, high-quality cabinets, finishes throughout. And that's, that was it. Again, I just wanted to give you a brief overview. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I have much more material with me if you, if you would like it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of the developer at this point in time?
I do.
Ken?
I, I have a couple of questions. According to staff report indicated the total parking space we provided, twenty-four, forty-seven. Out of that, based on my mathematics, is they're looking at about two-thousand-and-forty-seven parking spaces provided for the residential unit. So the, about one-point-eight-six parking spaces. Why is that we're not able to do, bring it up to two-point-oh parking spaces per unit with the city code? And then also, my second question is, you, you'd mentioned about share on-site parking. Just a share on-site parking, is it for commercial and residential or a visitor can able to use? And how many number of spaces are that available? And my third question is the, how are you able to handle weekend parking problem with the, you know, when all the residents stay home, they're not working, right? And they're at home. And then also you have to, customer tourists coming in, visitor come in, and, and the customer for the local retail. How are you gonna be able to accommodate that number of four-hundred parking spaces for commercial and residential mixed-use during that time?
Okay, lots of questions. So we, so we basically do, so to be clear, first of all, the twenty-four-hundred-plus parking stalls are exclusive for the residential units. We do have additional parking stalls, four-hundred stalls for the retail as well. I think those numbers were on there, but I just wanted to reiterate that.
I don't think so, because according to my mathematic calculation is the, if one-point-eight-six for eleven-hundred square residential unit only equal to two-thousand-and-forty-seven parking spaces.
Yes, sir. Plus, there are an additional four-hundred stalls.
For commercial use?
For commercial uses. Yes, sir. Those are separated out, so that, so, and that is, again, that's, that is, those four-hundred stalls are, are just for the, the, the commercial uses.
So where is share on-site parking?
So... So, so we, basically, the way that we have designed the project is those four-hundred spots for the commercial uses, those are separated out, so they're not just intermixed within the existing, they're, they're in the parking structure, but they're isolated by level. So they are in the lower subterranean level. So we, so, which gives us the opportunity to separate them out. We also have a parking management plan in place, or we will have one in place. We've done the studies for it regarding the use of a valet system. We hired an expert on valet parking, and we have a report, we haven't published that yet. But we, I don't think you've seen that yet. But we will be presenting that, and we will bring, we will be bringing him to explain how that system works. I'm not an expert on valet parking. But he is very passionate, very knowledgeable about it, having done that in multiple projects. And that allows us to, to, to bring our ratio very easily to the two-point-oh number, very, very simply as a matter of fact. So I don't know, I think, I don't know if I answered all your questions or not. I probably should have written them down.
Yeah, you know, I have seen a lot of the mixed-use development projects similar to our United States, have visited, like, for example, the one else up in Dallas, for example. Very much, very convenient. I, I would love to live in this area, be so walking distant to all the retail, all the conveniences and, you know, and then would be ideal project for a city of Santa Ana. I would more than happy to support the project, but then my bigger concern and all the, all the, as, if I live in there or I have a visitor come into, come to visit me, where they can go to park? And the parking problem is a major issue in our city. That's my, my main concern.
Yes, sir.
I think there's a couple of things that I've got following on to your, your comments, Ken. You know, you got four-hundred parking spaces for commercial use. You got two-hundred-and-forty, you got parking spaces for tenants. Where's the parking spaces for guests? Where does that get included?
Generally, that goes within the, within the resident number as well.
Within the resident?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Today, if I were to go and apply for an application or permit, what's my number of parking spaces per unit? Vince?
We're striving for two-point-oh per unit right now, Mr. Chairman.
You're striving for two-point-oh?
That's correct.
So why would we wanna go anything less than two-point-oh?
Which, which we would be achieving the two-point-oh number with our valet system, sir.
I've heard that one before.
That's...
And, and it's, you know, then the other side of the coin is, we need to have an agreed-upon parking management plan before we come forward with this thing. Because, because if we're gonna come forward with the type of plans that we've seen in the past, it's not, you know, I'm not in favor of them.
I, I, so we, and I, and I, I am aware of that, and I've heard that. That's why I'm not, I'm not an expert in parking. I found an expert in parking.
No, but it's very simple. Again, it's a very simple thing. It's math. It's two. And that's all we have to see is two. So, you know, if it means adding, adding parking spaces to make that number two work out, then I think we need to take that into consideration. Because that's what we're, you know, as a city, that's what we're striving for. Number-one complaint is parking. Number-one complaint in the city is parking. This is in an area that's hopefully not as impacted as other areas, but still, it doesn't, it doesn't say that we should give way to a lesser number. So if our standard is two-hundred, then I'd be asking, then we'd be asking for a variance. And, and I don't, and I don't believe in the variance at this point in time when you have fourteen acres of open space. So we should be able to strive for two parking spaces in addition to whatever we have here down here, commercial and everything else.
Okay.
Clear?
I hear you.
Okay. And then, again, like I said, the parking management, I'd like to make sure that that parking management plan is one that comes in front of this commission, not after this commission. Because in the past, there's been parking management plans that have been put together, and they've gone to council, but they haven't gone in front of the commission. And then the council comes back and says, well, the parking management plans were, were viewed and approved by the planning commission. They were not. So we need to see that that comes to...
I, I hear you loud and clear.
Anybody have, any, go ahead.
What's there right now? So it's zone light industrial. What's there right now? You say some office buildings?
It's Rico, Rico's office.
See, it's, it's the old Rico, it's the old Rico site.
Okay. And you said that there is going to be eighty-thousand square feet of commercial space. What's the percentage of that compared to residential? Do you know?
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Because it seems like we're replacing a lot of, residential's great, but those also require services from the city. And I understand, I love mixed-use. I think it's fantastic as a young millennial. I love mixed-use. But I am a little concerned that we're replacing a lot of, kind of, commercial office with a lot of housing and not putting in enough commercial to make up for that.
Step in?
Sure.
Okay. Give RC a break. So the current use is, it's actually kind of a dormant office building today. So it's, it's not actually producing kind of the economic benefits that we would expect from, you know, a normally functioning office building. And I would also point out that I think there was a study that was done along with our EIR that showed kind of the residential as we are contemplating it with the mixed-use and then, you know, an ulterior or alternative use for, for industrial flex zone property. And, and my kind of quick read of that analysis is that the residential, what we're contemplating has a far greater economic benefit to the city than would be the current zone use. So I would just encourage you, if you haven't seen that study yet, it's kind of dense. If you're sleepy, you might wanna read it, but it's, it's pretty good.
Thanks. If I could just add to that. Projects of this scale, more and more staff is requiring this sort of economic analysis to outweigh these very, or analyze these concerns. So in that study, which will be made available to you as part of the staff report for the project, you'll see that it actually even analyzes what would happen if we scraped the existing buildings and built a maxed-out industrial project here. You know, the maximum square footage that's allowed by the industrial zoning code in the general plan. And the preliminary analysis from that results show that a project of this mixed-use caliber and of these sort of market levels, the economic and fiscal impacts, the negative impacts of the city are outweighed by the positive impacts from the jobs and the land values going up and the commercial activity that would happen at this site. And that is something that's being produced, those results are being produced by this mixture of uses here, as well as the sheer scale and volume of the project. So I just want to reiterate that it was interesting in that the findings said that even if you scraped the buildings and built a maxed-out industrial project, the project that we have before us today would still have positive fiscal impacts to the city.
Great. I'll look forward to reading that. The other question that I have is, what is kind of the large, so, I mean, I know it's a rendering and it's not clear exactly who's gonna go in yet, right? I think a lot of times developers are hoping to get certain retail in or, but is there any space or room large enough for maybe a small grocery store or convenience store, right? If you're living in a mixed-use space, I might wanna run down and grab some produce or something like that. I understand food hall's great, but, you know, they have busy times and not-so-busy times. And I would like to see something that, you know, specifically makes it easy for a young person to just run down, grab some food, and head back to cook.
Well, I would tell you, we would certainly love a grocery store, even a small grocery store. We've designed the retail to be very, very flexible. Again, it does have, it's all two-story volume. It's designed that it could really hit, it could host many different tenant types. You know, we, if you design it for the most intensive, the less intensive are fairly easy to do. So restaurant is very intensive, and that's why we've designed the spaces to accommodate. So we could certainly get a convenience store in there, a small grocer, if that tenant was, was interested. What we do find is often until these buildings are built and people can physically see them, that it's very hard to figure out who the tenant, who the tenants will be. I mean, almost always, that's been my experience. And so, again, it's, it's very, very flexible. I did wanna answer one of your other questions, by the way. I was reminded that currently on the site, there is a homeless shelter on the site currently, and there is dry storage in the rest of the buildings. That's, that's kind of the current use on the site.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
This, the resident unit will be for rent or for sale?
They would be rental units.
Thank you.
Market value?
Just the architect, I don't know.
Yeah, but, but you're presenting this project, so, I mean, the question is...
Yes, the answer is yes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you asked what the market value was for the project as a whole.
Market value of the apartments, yes.
Yeah.
Are they, are they market value?
They're, they're, they're market rate units. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
That's okay. So the other thing that I've got, what, on the in-lu dollars, what is the dollar rate that we're using at this point in time?
It's fifteen dollars a square foot of the habitable residential space. Ally, do we have a calculation roughly right now?
And so what's the habitable residential space versus the, versus the commercial?
Those numbers are still being calculated, but it is fifteen dollars a square foot for habitable.
So you don't know how much commercial property versus livable rent, residential property is on the fourteen acres?
We don't have those precise figures yet.
What do we think it might be?
I'm reluctant to spit out an estimate unless having more detailed information, so...
I mean, I can roughly give an idea. The heritage was about, I think, a million square feet of residential.
And how much commercial is in that?
Twenty thousand square feet.
A million versus twenty thousand?
Right. So that's twelve-hundred units at that site, very similar in scale. So this one's a little bit smaller, but, so you're looking, well, it's the best I can tell you for comparison. The retail, the retail is very low on that one, because it was really the first one out of the box.
Okay, so the...
Out of the gate, interesting.
Well, we'd like to, I'd like to understand and see what that number is at, at some point in time. The second thing is, the comment was made live-work. So how many of these residential units are live-work?
So unless I'm mistaken, there's no live-work units, or are there?
There are.
Yeah.
There are none.
So the, the mix...
If there were none, why was it stated live-work?
I think that's just a euphemism for the ability to be able to live and work nearby, not necessarily live and work in your home.
Okay. It's a new definition I've heard.
Well, we said live-work-play. That's sort of a, kind of a phrase used to describe...
Well, the term was live-work that was stated, so...
Is that right?
That's what you stated, live-work.
Live-work-play. Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So for the amount of studios, the number of one-bed, two-bed, three-beds, do you guys happen to have a percentage on that?
The, the rough percentages are approximately seventy percent studios and ones, thirty percent twos.
And no one-bed or three-beds?
No, there are no three-bedroom units. So studios and one-bedrooms constitute about seventy percent.
Seventy percent.
Probably, approximately ten percent studios, ten or, ten or, somewhere between ten and twelve percent studios. The remainder are ones, and then the, the last, the other thirty percent are two bedrooms. There are, there are some three bedrooms as well, there are, there are some three-bedroom units as well.
Okay. And then, so I have here that it's going to be mixed-use. Do you guys have an idea around how many of these units will be market rate and how many will be low-income or...
They will all be market rate units.
They will all be market, okay. Maybe we wanna fix the mixed-use development.
Well, that's, that's because of the, the mixed-use is because of the retail. That's what we call it.
Got it.
A combination of retail and, and, and commercial, as we call it, a mixed-use project.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Okano answered my, or asked my question, which is, so none of the dwelling units will be affordable?
There are no, no affordable units on site.
So there will be in-lu fees paid instead of affordable units?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this point in time?
I do have a...
Go ahead.
For your presentation next time, whether it's staff or the developer, will you please come back with some numbers regarding how much we're paying in, in-lu fees and how that translates to actual development of low-income housing?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And the other question, I'm assuming that the EIR is, is done at this point in time, or is it...
The EIR is in the forty-five-day public comment period, which is slated to end on Tuesday, the eighteenth.
So when, when do we get to see the EIR?
The draft EIR is available online on the project webpage, as well as all the other traditional venues to view it. You'll also get, as part of the staff report, you'll get links and everything to the actual finalized document.
So if the draft EIR period ends when?
Tuesday, the eighteenth.
I'm sorry?
Tuesday, February eighteenth.
February eighteenth, okay. So that's next week?
Correct.
All right. And then how long are we gonna have to review it?
That depends on the staff report publishing deadlines. For a project of this scale, we can explore our deadlines and see if there's a way to make that information clearly available to the commission with ample time for reviewing it.
Ally, you dancing?
Mr. Chairman, for EIRs, you get a minimum of ten days advance. Normally, you get the packets the weekend before, but for EIRs, you get at least ten days prior to it.
Can we get a little more time to be able to review that?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you. All right. Thanks. Any other questions at this time?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, the last presentation is something you had asked for a couple of months ago.
Right.
You kind of want to know what projects, what's, I guess, basically an update on the projects you've seen over the past year. Most of the commission is familiar with these projects. Commissioner Fan probably doesn't know much about any of them, so it'll be a quick learning experience on these projects. So, here's it, Ally, has a quick overview for you on what has happened in 2019.
All right. So, this is our first-ever annual development update. So, thanks, Chairman, and the commission for having us this evening for this. If you're like me, between the ages of 25 and 34, you might remember talk shows like Sally, Jesse, Raphael and things like that, and kind of like where are they now updates. So, here they are. So, we're going to go in a loose chronological order, starting with early 2019 all the way to the end, some late 2018. So, this was the West Fifth Street Villas. This was a development to entitle eight townhomes with a subdivision map, and they are currently in plan check. So, they are moving forward with plans to construct. They should be ready for permit issuance in the coming months. This is Starbucks. This was approved by the commission on the 28th of January last year. It is completed. It opened back in September of 2019. This one is distinct because the developer hired a local artist to complete two murals on site. One of them is barely visible on the trash enclosure right here, but there's one about four or five times that size on the backside of the building, kind of providing a historical view of the city of Santa Ana.
Is this the one on Grand?
Correct. Yeah, by the big lots. This is Legacy Square, 93-unit affordable mixed-use development with some commercial and community room space. This one is entitled. The developer is seeking funding from a variety of state sources, as well as city funding, and they're hoping to apply again for funding in the coming months. Eng, go ahead.
Who's handling Legacy?
In terms of planner or developer?
Developer.
Developer, that was...
I think it's Legacy Partners, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think that's, Legacy Partners are a nonprofit group.
All right. English Street Townhomes, this was approved in February last year. This one is also in plan check. Rocket Express Car Wash, this came before the planning commission was approved on the 25th of February. It's entitled. The building on the site, a vacant furniture store, was recently demolished, and the applicant is preparing the drawings for building plan check.
But can I ask, there's two things I've heard on that. Number one is that the original developer is no longer the developer that, there's another developer.
That's correct. The property owner remains the same, but another developer has come in to actually construct the project.
And they're doing exactly what was previously planned?
That is correct, because conditions and entitlements run with the land, whoever...
And there was a suit against that. There was a suit out on that. Has that been settled?
There was nothing filed for that.
This is the one on 17th?
Yes. There was no lawsuit filed on this one.
Okay. Sorry. Is it the one, okay, nevermind. That's fine.
We'll get to that one, though.
There was, wasn't it?
Not on this one, no.
Okay. That's fine.
But, yeah. Again, at least, at least I mentioned, if there was one, it wasn't with, with the city involved, and it might have been between two private parties.
Okay.
It's all right. Raising Cane's, this is probably the most looked-forward-to application of 2019, at least by this person. This was a drive-through for Raising Cane's. It demolished the old claim jumper, rebuilt it. They actually just opened, had their grand opening. So, this is a photo from last week. They're doing very well. Not going to give opinions on the chicken here. Hat Fan Residential is an 18-unit multifamily development at 3025 West Ettinger. It's purely residential, no mixed use. This was approved by this body on the 15th, oh, I'm sorry, the 13th of May, and they're currently in plan check. Legacy Sunflower, not to be confused with Legacy Square. Legacy Sunflower is down at 651 West Sunflower. This one was also approved on the same date. They are also in plan check. Main Place Transformation, it was a busy evening that night on the 13th. This was the new specific plan at Main Place. This one is entitled. Basically, it's a, since it's a specific plan, individual implementing projects have to now come through. So, the city is reviewing plans for a new parking structure and has also had meetings and pre-submital discussions for a residential project there. An edutainment use, kidsania, as well as reconstruction of the Nordstrom Box building into a new multi-level dining, cinema, and entertainment building. In-N-Out Burger, this is the reconstruction of the one on Bristol Street, just north of Civic Center. So, this one was approved on the 28th of May and is also in plan check. 7-Eleven, this was approved in June. It's for a new 7-Eleven and gas station. And the, after getting entitled, the 7-Eleven folks decided to walk away from the project. There has been some interest in another developer and operator coming in and taking over the entitlements. Eco Town, second-hand store down on South Bristol Street. This one is operating. It was approved in August. Euclid Office Building, new medical office building on North Euclid Street, approved in August as well, and it is also in plan check right now. Russell Fisher Car Wash, this is the car wash that was approved after the site was entitled for a commercial building. This one was approved in September. It's entitled, and this is the one, Chairman, that is facing some legal action. I Can Barbecue, this is a new Korean barbecue restaurant here in downtown, not too far walking distance, approved on the 9th of September, and it's operating. The Coptic Orthodox Church here, this is for a new 10,000-square-foot community and service building with mezzanine. It was continued by the planning commission in September 2019 to allow the applicant time to work with the new entitlement team, and it will be rescheduled for consideration on a future agenda.
Do we have any idea when that's going to be?
We do not. I just had discussions last week with the new architect, and he wants to go out to the community in the next few weeks and see what he can salvage from the project.
I mean, I've been down into that church a couple of different times, and, I mean, a couple of things. One is, is they seem to have a parking management group that's down there. It's, looks like a private agency. Drove through the neighborhood, very few cars in the neighborhood, very few cars. And the school, which they supposedly have leased parking spaces from, was empty.
Well, it's good to hear, because the message was loud and clear from this body is that you need to really be good neighbors with the, between the church and the residents.
Yeah.
So, to hear they have the management plan and people out there controlling traffic is a good sign, and it's a move in the right direction, so...
So, we don't have any idea when it's going to be?
No. You're probably looking spring, probably three to four months at the earliest. The whole architect team has been let go, and they got a new, a whole new entitlement team.
The whole?
The architectural team who came up here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're gone.
Okay.
But they moved on from them.
All right.
First American, this is recently entitled in October 2019. It is entitled and in plan check. In addition, the developers have begun drafting the plans for the peel-back of the historical building at Fifth and Main. And that will require some notification to this body, as well as the Historic Resources Commission, City Council, and all that in anticipation of activities that will basically remove the 1970s cladding on the building and determine whether the structure that's underlying is in a condition that could be feasibly incorporated into the project, as shown in the rendering that you're looking at right now. So, that should be happening late February, early March. Marisco's Hector, this is a new type 47 and a small expansion of an existing restaurant. This was approved by council in January 2020 with some extra conditions of approval. Now, the applicant's working with the city to ensure that they're meeting the conditions that were imposed on the project.
The extra items that they supposedly identified, weren't they the same items that we identified?
Mostly. The additional one is a security guard out there, but the same one is noise mitigation was the same one. And the six-month review was the same one.
Right. Okay. Nothing new other than that? Okay.
All right. The Addington, this is a new 256-unit community at Main Street, approved by city council in January. And now, they are in the 30-day approval period. A lawsuit has been filed, and a referendum on the project is pending. Vista Heritage, this is an expansion of an existing school to nearly double the student capacity. Again, approved by city council in January 2020 and is seeking to submit to plan check in March. And that concludes the presentation. We have to give more details if asked.
So, anybody have any questions on any of the projects? Nope? Nope? Question I have is, the one that, the, the two that, that I thought we would have some information on was, where's Elon? It's not, you know, where's Waldo, but...
Elon is doing well. He says hello. Basically, they are in plan check. They right now have submitted plans for what's called shoring, when you start excavating the ground, and shoring it up to prepare it for underground parking. So, they've submitted for both Buildings 1 and 2 on that site.
So, the project is underway and everything's going in the right direction?
Correct. They've submitted all the necessary documents for plan check. They're going through the regular plan check cycle, which means that their cycles will require some time. It's a pretty complex project, so, but they've submitted everything.
The, the other project that, I'm not sure it's in the, in our purview, but is the building that's being built behind Town and Country, is that in Santa Ana or is that in Orange?
Yes, sir. That is in Santa Ana. It's on the Town and Country campus, right on that northeast corner, and...
Did we, I didn't see that.
It was allowed by right. About four years ago, the commission approved an SD out there, which allowed their future construction to occur. That was originally supposed to be an eight-story tower. And when they went, they had to, Town and Country had to pre-sell the units in order to have the state approval to build the building. They couldn't get the pre-approvals to collect 70%, basically had to be leased up 70% of the building. They couldn't do that, so what they decided to do is kind of take a different tact and kind of enhance their current campus. So, it's more of a care facility now for Alzheimer's and similar types of dementia, so, which is allowed out there right now. So, that's why you didn't see it. So, it's basically a two-story building, and it's just starting construction.
How many units is it?
It's 44 rooms, so it's about 80 beds, two stories, underground parking, along with some surface parking as well. So, that little dog park that people use as a dog park on the corner, all grassed out, essentially would be gone.
So, it's more, it's, it's more of a care facility than, than a housing facility?
That's correct.
Because the units behind it are, right behind it are housing units. I mean, people are renting those out.
On, on the current campus? That's also care as well. It's all kind of your care facilities.
Okay.
Yeah. This, this tower's supposed to be the eight-story, where I go in there while I'm still healthy and vibrant, and as I start needing some assistance, I would transition to another portion of the site, which had a little more care. And then, I'd eventually transition to, say, the Alzheimer's ward if I lose my marbles.
That's next week, right?
So, that's what it was supposed to be originally. So, I'm sorry.
I said that's next week, or...
Hopefully, a little longer. Give me a few months.
Should have been last week.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ally. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to staff comments. Any comments from staff? Okay. Angie? Speak to us, huh? All right. Ty?
Nothing.
Felix?
Just want to say thanks to staff, and this annual development update was really good. It's kind of, it's nice to see the, I guess, what, what has come through and where, where things are at, so. It's a good one. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Felix. I, I, you know, I, I think we ought to be able to do this, Ally said annually, but I think it, we get asked a lot of questions by a lot of people from time to time. There's a big dirt space, what's going there? And it's helpful to have a little bit of a cheat sheet to say, "Oh, okay, this is what's going in there." So, I think that's something we need to continue on doing, and it would be something I think that would be beneficial, not just to us, but to the people we interface with on a day-to-day basis, so. Thanks for doing that. Appreciate your help. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:00, 7:35? What's that?